You could tell where.
Do you have the sheet for the name? She gave it to me. Okay, alright. We're gonna call the county council meeting to order. I know people are coming in yet and signing in. Keep doing that, that's fine, but we're gonna, we're gonna start the meeting. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Lot has the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Young, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kuzick. Mr. Dietz.
Here.
Mr. Coraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Bargel Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present with Mr. McGee by phone.
Yes, Mr. McGee is on the phone. Alright, uh, first what we're gonna do is have approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for December 3rd?
So moved.
So move. Second, alright, Mr. Dietz, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed. Alright, now, we have courtesy of the floor. Uh, I am waiting for the sheet. However, having said that, I do know there is one person who was first, because I recognize the name, and I'm gonna let him come up and start. And that's, uh, Mr. Kevin Dolan. Mr. Dolan, you have five, normally you have five minutes, and you pretty much do, but considering your situation, and you're leaving us, if you go a minute or two over, no one's gonna yell at you.
Well, I tell you, my, my uncle is a Monsignor, and whenever I do the eulogies at our family, um, funerals, he always tells me I have seven minutes. And he, uh...
Just think, if history had been different, you could have been a Monsignor. But we both know that probably would have happened. I'm sorry, go ahead. We've known each other too long.
My mother was an elementary school teacher, and she taught me always to say thank you, and to appreciate my blessings and good fortune. The Children, Youth and Families Division has been supported by many councils, but especially the members sitting before me. And that is why I wanted to address you to this, this evening, because I could have done it, I have 70 days left, and I could have done it in January or February, but this, this is the group that has been very important and supportive to, to me. Children, Youth and Families Division has been supported by many county councils, but especially the members sitting before me. You truly understood child protection, and have been very supportive in protecting the children of North Hampton County. Hopefully, in future years, there will be fewer individuals appearing before the court stating that the reason they took a negative path in life was because they were abused as a child. So I want to say heartily, thank you to all the members of this council for what you have done for the division. And after 45 years, I've been in front of a lot of councils, and this group has been one of the, you've been great, uh, to, to us. I want to, especially, uh, Mr. Heckman, Ron, if I, if I, I can't, Ron. Mr. Heckman started out, started out as one of my first investigators in, in the early, uh, when we were just starting the investigation, uh, units here in North Hampton County. And then you, um, moved on to greater things. You became my boss, the Director of Human Services, and now you're President of County Council, so, um, it's been a long way since those, um, early days of, uh, starting up the, the Child Abuse Investigation Unit. So I just wanted to recognize that. I also want to thank our county executive, Mr. McClure, Mr. Dertenger, Steve Barron, and Sue Wondolowski for being so supportive in protecting the children of our county. As an administrator, I understand what it takes to run a division and get things done. And it takes people to help you. And, um, all, everybody mentioned has. I'm almost finished, Ron.
Take your time.
I sit on the State Board of Directors of Children, Youth Administrators, and know that many of the administrators don't have the support shown in this county. It is because of everyone just mentioned that North Hampton County is recognized as one of the better agencies in the Commonwealth in protecting children, probably one of the top 10 in the state. Um, so, I finish by simply saying, thank you.
Well, I just wanna say, Kevin, let's, hold on. We, uh, I think I can speak for all of us. We all appreciate all the time you've put into this. I mean, the dedication, you, you started 70...
Seventy-four, July, July 22nd, 1974.
Came back from Peace Corps, if I'm not mistaken, and that's when you started.
Came back from Asia.
You, you've dedicated your whole life to this, and, uh, I, I hope, I agree with you. I hope all that turns out in the future with kids, and, and you're right, it was, were interesting times, and we, humans, uh, the child abuse, before, when people, doctors and others would say, get out of my office, I'm not getting involved, before we had the law to back us up sometimes. But you, you know, you started that, you had it, got it going, and, uh, you allowed us, um, you've allowed us the freedom to, uh, get some of that stress out of our system by being animals sometimes in the office. And, and, uh, I appreciate that. I look back with that, that, those are good memories. And, you know, you and, you know, the other people that were working there too, and, uh, it was good. But I, I, I wanna congratulate you. You've, you've made a great deal of difference to the county and for all the young people. As, uh, you know, some of the records, now you were talking about grandparents.
Yep.
So anyway, but thank you. I think that we all appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Very much.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we will go to the next person on the list. And if you didn't get on the list, don't worry, at the end, I always ask if there's anybody, anybody who wants to, uh, address counsel. Alright, next, if I, if I mess up the name, you gotta, when you come up, please say your name for the clerk, and you can correct it at that point. And everyone will have five minutes. Next, I have John White. It's okay, it's fine by me. Uh, next, we have Susan Glovis.
Hi, um, my name is Susan Glovis. I'm the Judge of Elections in Forks West Board Two. I'm here trying to give you guys the feel of us in the trenches. We deal, I have in my particular precinct, I have 3,000, over 3,000 voters. And, um, I have been involved in the machine. I went to the thing in Allentown. Um, I voted for these machines because I looked at all five of them, I tried all five of them. This was the one that I felt was the easiest to use, and also the one that made the most sense from a financial perspective. In my precinct, like I said, I have 3,000 voters. I don't know if this law has changed, but from what I was told, if you have a paper ballot, you have to have 10% more than your registered voters at the time of the voting. So in my ballot, in my little precinct, there'll be 3,000 ballots. I've been the Judge of Elections for four year, or for three years. Uh, the most, the, the, the most voters I've ever had is 1,622 voters. We would be throwing away almost 2,000 voting ballots if we would have gone with something that had a paper that you had a scan. I am friends with a number of Judges of Elections in different counties. The people from Lehigh were very unhappy with theirs, both the voters and the people that worked it. Everybody in my precinct, as well as the little precinct that's on the other end of the hall from me, we had minimal problems. We talked to our people when they came in, we showed them how to use the machines. Everybody felt comfortable with it. They know us, if they have questions, this isn't working right, what's going on, we were able to, to tutor them through it. If we would have waited until Feb., uh, until May to get our machines, I couldn't even imagine what we would be going through. I only had 1,600 voters in, um, oh no, I'm sorry, I had 800 voters in November. So I have 800 people out of my 3,000 that have been trained. So, we're gonna have to work with all those other people because I know they're gonna be out in May, and I know they're gonna be out in November. And it's a slow process, but for those of us that work with the machines hands-on, I really am not aware of anybody that's talked to me, and they all know, you know, we all talk. Nobody's really unhappy with the machines, and I'm glad we chose them, and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Um, next, we have Sandra O'Brien.
Good evening, Sandy O'Brien, 705 Paxton Noah's Avenue. Good to see you again. Um, I, I wanna say first that, um, I do appreciate the time you put in. I come up here about these voting machines, and I'm very unhappy about it, and, um, I don't, I don't mean to come at you like a crazy woman, but, and for Mrs. Glovis, I'll be your first one, I guess, who says, you know, I'm not happy with the machines. But, um, I'm getting older, and my patience is limited, so, here goes. Uh, I have expressed my opposition to these machines before, and shortly after the election, I came in here, and I related the experiences of nine other county voters, plus my own, that either came to me directly or online, uh, on the phone, and, and then I heard or read, and I'm saying maybe both, that there were very few problems throughout the day. And I think that's clearly not true. What is true is that many voters were frustrated by the length of time they spent waiting online, and the inadequacies of the machines. The people of our county are a really nice bunch. They're not prone to complain all that much, or make life miserable for our poll workers. It's an extremely long day, and, uh, they had their hands full November 5th. I can tell you Dana Kenny and 3-2 was, and the other people, were teaching the entire day, teaching class to the lines of people, trying to explain to them how to do this. And, um, the thing is though, that I was outside the poll all day except for lunch, and there were people coming out, and they were relating to me their displeasure and unhappiness, but they would not tell their poll workers because they knew that they were overwhelmed. As I continue to hear about the shortcomings, I, I would like to suggest, and it may not be even legal, but I think in the interest of transparency and decency, that there should be a place for our voters to critique their experiences so that we can do better next time. It could be a sheet of paper in the polls, outside with somebody like me who's there all day, or it could be online, but feedback is essential to a happy electorate. Now, I, I listened to the presser held, I think it was here today, I'm, I'm, it was somewhere close by, I guess, and I find myself still wanting. My first question is, where's the quality control at ESNS? How in the world does a company complete a $2.8 million deal and send out bad screens with poor candidate placement on them? If I buy a microwave for $150, I expect all the functions to work when I plug it in at home. I don't expect to have a few of them work, and it's only 150 bucks. Uh, second, enough with the, we were missing a few thousand votes. Ask Abe Cassis, 26,000 votes he was missing. And at the end of the day, he had only 180, 64 votes. I read in the paper again, that there were only two precincts in East End where he had no votes. But we had 300 and some machines, so how does he get 164 votes? Did he get half votes? I'm just saying, that's ridiculous to even put that out to the public. What's, another question, what's in place for the next pre-election pre-testing that we had this time, but apparently didn't work? We, how will that be different in 2000, uh, 2020? And then one more thing, the last thing. I think it's disingenuous of ESNS to send somebody here repeatedly saying that these problems are new to them. The state of California filed a $15 million lawsuit against ESNS for using uncertified auto-mark voting systems there. ESNS machines have been directly tied to significant undervotes at every level in Georgia, Florida, Texas, Arizona, Pennsylvania, and North Carolina. And just for example, in this county, 65 printouts came out with nothing on them. 65 people waited in line, wrestled with those machines, and got nothing for it. 65 of us, how many will it be next time? No one can tell. Um, an Indiana contract was terminated after it was revealed that ESNS violated state law, lied to election officials, and were responsible for errors that led to long voting wait times, voter anxiety, discouraged voters, and embarrassment. Sounds very familiar. So I, I leave you with this question and an answer. Who will win next year's election? ESNS, 2.8 million, and not much to show for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I believe, let me just double check. Oh yes, I have Deb Hunter. If you'd come up.
Yeah, I'm Deb Hunter, hey. See you again, um, Forks Township, and I'm on the Election Commission until the end of this month. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. First of all, I'm glad to see ESNS is here. I hope that they brought technical people with them, and just not their sales and marketing people. I just wanted to bring to your attention other issues, which I've been talking to you about, I haven't heard much response about, but I think that you need to know this is another problem that needs to be addressed, not just the machines. You've got some personnel issues in the Elections Office, okay? We still do not have a permanent director. The custodian of the machines, which was a full-time position, was cut from the budget last year, late last year, knowing that we had this big rollout of a new machine coming. So, the reason I'm saying this is because you hold the purse strings. We are having an Election Commission meeting coming up next week, December 19th, finally. And I'm sure, you know, some of you don't wanna go to one more meeting. So I'm kind of coming here to give you just a little bit of background information. Hopefully, the next Election Commission will also focus on these things, but because you hold the purse strings, I am hoping that you are going to be asked to fund at least a part-time custodian of the machines, a permanent director of the department, and this is nothing against Amy Hess, she's done a great job in the position that she was put. The other thing I would like to put up here, and somebody mentioned it at the last meeting I was at, with regards to the poll workers. These folks are dedicated people, I have no doubt, but we don't have enough of them. We need to do something about recruitment and incentivizing people to be poll workers. Along with that, we need better and more training of the poll workers. Next year is going to be a very heavy voting year, and we've got new voting rules in place, as you know. We're gonna have lots and lots of absentee ballots coming in, so you're going to make sure we have to have staff on, you know, to count those as well. We need consistency between the polls. I am sure that what this woman was saying was true at that poll at Forks Township, but I can tell you that there was not consistency in what the poll workers were doing at the polls. I do not blame them. There just needs to be better training. Also, there was a directive that came bound, down by Judge Barata during the day, that with, all the poll workers were supposed to be alerting people to the lack of sensitivity on the judge retention buttons. I know that wasn't consistently told, carried through. I had personal experience with that one, I wasn't told a thing about it. And that was supposed to be a directive from the judge. So what I'm saying is, there's a lack of consistency. I do not blame the poll workers. What I am saying is, we need more of them, they need to be better trained. And I'm hoping that if and when the administration comes to you with these suggestions, that you will definitely consider doing that, if we wanna make sure that the next elections next year are going to be done properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have, and I apologize, Mike Cosia. And if you'd come up and give your name, I'm sorry if I messed it up.
Hello, my name is Mike Kosha.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. You were very, very close. I applaud you.
Sort of horseshoes close.
I am an employee of North Hampton County, and work for the Department of Human Services. For the past three years, I have worked in the Division of Children, Youth, and Families. I am also a shop steward for PSSU Local 668. I'm a resident of North Hampton County, and also a taxpayer. My coworkers and I come here to speak to you under the fear of possible reprisal and retribution. Esteemed council members, good evening. I would like to thank you for granting audience an opportunity for redress. I would also like to congratulate you all on a fine, on the fine work that you have done and continue to do for our community. I have worked in the public sector for almost 18 years. My career and my life has been dedicated in the service of children. Both as a youth care worker at the North Hampton County Juvenile Detention Center, and now as a caseworker for Children, Youth, and Families. What could I say? I truly and genuinely love my job. I am first and foremost a family man. I am the proud father of two sons, and a loving husband of the most beautiful woman on earth. They rely on me to nurture and provide. They are the purpose for my, of my presence here this evening. We at the Department of Human Services are entering the third year of a three-year contract that has not been signed yet. We have a tentative agreement that holds favorable in many positions, yet empty promises in others. More specifically, we have negotiated a tentative agreement that has not been honored. A 1.75% wage increase remains withheld, a sum which is clearly and irrevocably stated in our tentative agreement. We would see this situation be remedied as soon as possible, and without delay. We do not seek gladiatorial combat. However, we will not stand as a fool in a king's court either. Rather, we appeal to your reason. I sincerely thank you for this allotted time. It is my wish that we may continue to work together for the betterment of our community. I wish you all a very Merry Christmas, and a joyous New Year. Thank you.
Next, I have, and I, I think I got this, Kezzy Johnson from Department of Human Services. You would just come up, and you have five minutes, and if you'd repeat your...
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Kezzy Johnson, and I am employee of North Hampton County Children and Youth and Department of Human Services. For nearly, for nearly 11 years, I have been working at the apartment, at the department. And I am a very happy and happy employee to be there. I am currently the Chief Stop Steward, Chief Stop Steward of the PSSU Local 668. I wanted to ask you, did you know? Did you know that the caseworker twos and the caseworker threes in our county are nowhere, nowhere equivalent to the starting salary of our neighboring county? Last week, there was discussions about salaries being competitive and more in line with salaries from other places. Because what was stated, we don't want people to leave. But did you know that a starting caseworker two in our neighboring county starts at $44,000? But for us, 40. Did you know that a caseworker three in our neighboring county starts at $56,000? And for us, 44. So let me talk about me, for example. I've been here for almost 11 years. And in the 11 years, my pay has increased 42 cents per year. And due to the significant change, the significant difference in my pay, I am forced to work three, not one, not two, but three additional jobs with the county so I can make up to support me and my family. So for trying to make sure pay is in line and competitive with our other counties, which was expressed in the last budget hearing, why wouldn't we start there? Because as we speak, caseworkers are walking out the door, or are planning to. And you may be asking why? Well, let me give you some facts. In 2018, Children and Youth has received over 2,000 referrals. And at this point in 2019, and we still got two weeks to go, we are at almost 6,000. And who's supposed to handle all these cases? Us? When there's 15 vacancies? And at the end of the year, there's still more people leaving. And I know there was be, there was discussions about high vacancies, and maybe that may be civil service, and I agree, that may account for some of this stuff. But the real issue is why would someone come here? When they can go somewhere else and make practically double what we are? Where they can have a manageable caseload, where they have a full staff, and much more help? Why would somebody come here if their administration is unwilling to just pay 1.75% of what was agreed upon? And then in the next breath, are giving out 9.2s in steps? Like it's Christmas candy? I would also like, like to ask you if you knew that in January of next year, some of us will continue to lose more of our salary? Late this year, employees were sending emails stating that if we did not complete a physical exam by November 30th, we would lose 1% of our salary for the upcoming year. And this was a shock, and a stressor to many of us, because we're busy. But it's so funny that this would happen, because over the past year, we've been in fighting negotiations in regards to our lunch, our lunch. Because it has been withheld from us if we use our time and are not working a full eight-hour day. Now, the workforce was being told that in...
Yeah, I'm, you, as a shop steward, and you're here with this concern, I'm gonna give you, do you think you can use another minute?
Absolutely.
Alright, go ahead. I'm sorry for this, I'm wrong, I...
I'm sorry, now with the workforce being told that in order to not lose 1%, they now have to take off a day, it seems so silly. Because now have, we only been short of 1.75, but now we're gonna lose another 1%, which is part of our 2% raise, which means we're only gonna get 1%. The caseworkers of North Hampton County are loyal, committed, and dedicated, the most dedicated individuals you'll ever meet. But over the past year, we have been working on a deficit, not only in our wages, but in our staffing, and it cannot go on much longer. So we, all of us, came here today to talk to you, because we need your help, we need your support. We came here to talk to you because we cannot go another day trying to convince people that we are worth it. So now that you know, please, tell us, what are you gonna do?
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, just a second. Uh, and I know I have a couple others. Since you are the shop steward, I, I, and I, we're not gonna get into a discussion, but we will, I, I, we have a Human Services Committee. You, you mentioned concerns and about the contract, and as the shop steward, is this, um, you're in communication with your business agent? in communication with your business agent? I mean, so there's a lot involved here and...
Correct.
There's, okay. I mean, I know the administration negotiates, we don't really get into the negotiation other than approve, but I, you know, as a shop steward for the union, I was in PSSU at one time. And I know that with your business agent, I don't know if at some point they would want to come and talk or not, because normally we don't get too deeply. We got to be careful what questions we ask on council. But that's not your concern, it's our concern. But we, but thank you, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you all, Merry Christmas.
What was that? Do you want to say something? Do you want to wait until we're done, or do you want to say something now? I'm sorry, Ms. Margot Hefner, I wanted two questions of clarification. Was it for Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Would you please come back up and we'll just do these two questions, and then I'm going to move on. She's chairman of the Human Services Committee.
Hello, I don't want to get in the weeds. I just wanted to know, you mentioned a neighboring county. Which county were you referring to?
Lehigh County.
And you and your colleague mentioned that it was a three, what year was the original contract negotiated?
We negotiated at the end of 2018.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, appreciate it. Okay, next, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we have Miguel Santiago. Miguel, if you would just repeat your name for the clerk, and you have five minutes as well.
Okay, thank you. My name is Miguel Santiago. I work for Northampton County. I was working with children and youth for 17 years, and I recently moved to another unit in the IRIS department, taking care of emergency services, doing 302s and all that sort of stuff, and crisis work. I'm also a shop steward for the county, PSSU 668. And we have here some workers that we brought along with us. We didn't bring everybody, as you can very well see, but we have quite a few numbers that represent a cross-section of the people that work there, okay? We have people from Aging Department, we have people from Children and Youth, we have people from Mental Health, also Drug and Alcohol, okay? And from my department, IRIS, Emergency Services, okay? What I want to first of all say to you all, I thank you all for giving me a floor, giving us a floor to discuss what we think needs to be discussed and brought out into the open, okay? With that said...
Hold on just a second. Wherever that's coming from?
He's got it, he's got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, I don't want you to be interrupted.
Yes, with that said, I also hope that no negative retribution would be seeked out for any of my colleagues or myself that are trying to make a point here, okay? First of all, I'm not going to reiterate everything that all my other colleagues said because that would make no sense. But anyway, you know where we stand on that. What I really want to say is that we haven't had a real decent contract since, I think, 2014, okay? And as all of you are very well aware, the cost of living adjustment always goes up, it does not go down, okay? So with, we worked for about four and three-quarters of a year without a contract, okay? With the same salary that we had. And the cost of living kept going, going up and up and up. And last year, was it, the last contract negotiations, they gave us 2.75, and then they said they were going to give us another 1.75 as something else for the next year coming up. We never received it, it's all up in the air. With that said, our neighboring county, okay, that you just mentioned, Lehigh County, I understand that they just had a 10% increase in their salary, along with a 3% increase that they're going to give them when the year starts again. So that's a total of 13, if I'm not wrong, okay? But that's that. Now, what I wanted to say was, I mean, a lot of us, like Kezzy just said, she works three other, two other jobs, three jobs, whatever, I am in the same boat, okay? To make ends meet and to keep my head above the red, I have to work three other jobs. And I'm working also, I have another hat that I wear, that I work at Lehigh County as a crisis worker there on the weekends, okay? So I have no time for anything, I mean, I don't expect you guys to really pat me on the back or anything like that, but that's it. Now, the thing is that I'm trying to run across is this, okay? Our workers, okay, like Kezzy said, are very dedicated and very good workers, okay? We serve the community. And the community that we serve is, are those that are most vulnerable, okay? Children that are abused, families that are torn apart, okay? The elderly, okay? People that come in with mental health problems, okay? And those that have drug and alcohol addictions, okay? We service all those people, okay? We do a good for the county. And we're a positive force for all this. So, my question to you, and I don't know if I could direct it to the county executive also.
You can direct it to whoever you want.
Okay, I'd like to direct this to the county executive also, with all respects.
I mean, technically speaking, you're directing me, but he's here and, believe me, he hears you.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make it be known, okay? I know that recently, he enacted in his budget that he was going to raise the director's salary over at Greysdale to, what was it again? I don't have it on me, but it was considerable, okay? And it's nice, but the thing is, okay, I know a couple of you...
Sorry, continue, take another minute.
Okay, I know that a couple of you, or several of you, had questioned his move on that. Specifically, I'll mention one, John Kuzick, okay? Because I read it on the paper, okay? So that's okay. Now, the thing is...
He called me out.
Okay, okay. Now, the thing that I'm concerned about, just like he was and several of you, was that it didn't look good that he did that like that, because it would be not a good thing for the other workers underlying that are working there as well. Well, we consider it, the workers over here at the DHS building, that are doing all this great work for you guys, okay? Not for you guys, the county, that, you know, I think it's a slap to our faces. I mean, I'm going to have to be a little more descriptive than that, okay? Because he, when you guys, for lack of a better way of saying it, when you guys asked him why he did that, he stated to you guys, okay, being the county exec, that he felt that she was a very good worker and that there are other directors in nursing homes in the area that are making in excess of 135,000 to 175,000, okay? So he figured he'd lift it up a little bit for her, which is great, okay? But now, where does that leave us, the workers, the real main force, okay? The ones who work in the trenches, okay? Every day with all of the negative forces that are out there, okay? To make a positive return, okay? And we haven't seen anything, you know? It's like, you know, he said when he came in that he was going to be for the worker and for those that are vulnerable. Well, I'd like to see something happen to go in that direction, because I haven't seen it yet, and neither have...
Miguel, are you able to summarize in about 30 seconds or so? I'm just asking.
Yes, yes, I'll summarize.
I wanted to give you a little extra time.
Yes, okay, I thank you.
No, no problem.
Yeah, so, one other thing was our healthcare, okay? We had an open formulary before, and now it's a closed formulary. I don't think I have to explain that, I think all you are very well aware of that. And the thing is, a lot of our workers are paying more for their healthcare than what they did before, and it was promised that it was going to be something better than what we had before, and I don't think it is. And I would just like to thank you folks for listening, and I hope that some good comes out of this, okay?
Thank you very much, Miguel. Thank you. Now, we're going to have to move on to, I believe it's Anell Ferguson? I'm sorry, what?
She's the sign-up chief.
She thought it was the sign-up chief, too.
Okay, all right, so you don't want to speak? Okay, that's fine. Now, that is all I have as names listed. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on any issue? Sir, if you would just come up, please, give your name to the clerk, and you have five minutes.
My name is Kurt Ehlly, E-H-L-Y. Do you need my address? I live in Easton.
That's fine.
That's good enough?
Yes.
I got to say, the last time I was here was probably 15 years ago. Things look different. It's not that I'm not interested in the community or the county, certainly I am, but most of the time, I spend more concerned about Easton issues and not as concerned about the county. Tonight is a definite difference. I'm concerned about the voting machines, the ESNS XL voting machines, and the experience that I had in November, and I think it's an experience that others... I feel like I'm 35, I get around a lot, I'm really not, as you can tell. I have a lot of clients of mine who are seniors, my mom passed away a couple years ago. She was a Republican who loved to push that straight Republican button or pull that lever. I don't think that's an unusual experience for many. And yet, it was so striking to me that when I went to my polling booth in Easton, I was told that, "Be careful, you can't push that straight ticket button, it's not working today." When I went through the experience of listening to the instructions, the poll worker was working hard. That particular woman had said the same speech over and over again. Little groups would gather, many were seniors, the neighborhood I live in has a lot of seniors in it. They would nod, but they had this sort of look on their face, sort of the one that I had too, because there were a lot of instructions, it was confusing, there obviously were things that weren't working. And when I went to that machine and I went inside and I tried to push the buttons as my finger would approach that screen, repeatedly, the choice I didn't want was the one that came up. And I had to very carefully correct that error, it wasn't mine, but it was the machine's error. I had to correct that error and very, very carefully make sure that the buttons that finally did show after a lot of work were the right buttons. And then, after that experience of reviewing it, which they did say was part of the instruction, I then had to check that paper ballot, and boy, that was interesting. I don't know about others, but I had a little difficulty reading that paper ballot and then making sure that those choices were being properly reflected. And then finally, I was able to leave, and I thought about making a point of all of this, and then I thought, wait a minute, they're working hard enough already, I'll have an opportunity to express myself another time. I didn't expect it would be here, but I did expect that I would have a conversation with those involved in the process. I was so shocked to learn later in the evening, as I tried to check those results, and I saw numbers that made absolutely no sense, and then all of the rest of it that has followed. Seniors struggle with a lot of things. They've got a lot of pride. I heard here someone mentioned that there was not a problem and no one had a thing to say, and it was beautiful and wonderful. And that particular judge had a great experience, and I'm glad that the folks there had no problem. I didn't see it that way. And when I left my polls and I stuck around for a little while outside, there were a lot of people who were greatly concerned. So, my experience, you know, I'm kind of old, I voted for almost 20 years now here in Northampton. I voted for well over 25 years in Montgomery County. I'm proud to say that with almost, without exception, I voted in every primary and every general election I was able to vote in since I was 21. My parents were very, very proud to vote every single election. And this experience was by far and away the worst experience. I left there with no confidence whatsoever that the votes that I cast were going to be properly counted and recorded, and that only got reinforced with what I've read and heard about since. By far and away, no doubt about it, the most unsettling, worst experience I've ever had voting. Any questions about that from anyone? I'd welcome them.
What was your name again?
Ehlly, E-H-L-Y, the first name is Kurt. I live at 305 West Monroe Street in Easton. I love this town, I love this county.
Ms. Ehlly, what's going to happen is, and people are free to talk, then it's courtesy of the floor, it's still open. We have ESNS here tonight.
I was at the press conference.
All right, well, we're going to go, we're going to have a little bit more of a press conference. They're here to show us and explain to us exactly what happened, what was done to address it. And I am going to be asking people, we're going to be courteous, there's not going to be a lot of, they're going to do their thing. I can assure you, they'll probably have to come back again before the primary. And talking to some of my fellow council members, this may not be the only time they're here with a machine. So, if any questions come out tonight, there will be other times to address it. But we understand what you're saying, and you're probably going to hear a lot of the things you mentioned be brought up tonight.
One more comment. I stopped after the press conference and I went to the Board of Elections office. I believe her name was Amy, I'm not sure, it could be mistaken.
Ms. Hess is the acting chair.
But she was the person who came to the counter, was very, very helpful. She followed up to make sure that I was aware that this would happen this evening, that's why I'm here. She also mentioned that the Board of Elections will be having a meeting, a regular meeting of their own.
That was mentioned, December 19th.
Right.
So, and those are all public meetings, absolutely. In fact, that's a good place to go with concerns, too, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address council under... I know, give your name for her and you have five minutes.
Dale Sorbeck, 3211 Oakland Road, Bethlehem Township. I did have a concern when I voted. I was punching the little boxes, and let's say, Mr. Hickman, that I voted for you, and then Ms. Rensky was below you, and I wanted to vote for Ms. Rensky, and when I pushed on her name, your vote disappeared.
Wait, I wasn't on the ballot this time.
That's why you lost.
That's an example.
Oh, I'm sorry, give me an example.
Example, yeah.
As the gentleman said, I'm older now, I'm older now too, you had me confused there for a second there, but go ahead.
So then I did it again, and the same thing happened. So I called the poll worker over, and she said, "You have to hit it exactly in this spot, or that's what happens." So I want to just pass that along, because I think that could be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Can I just ask a question? Not of him.
Well, let me, let me, let me finish this, because he's going to be standing up in a minute anyway. Were you pointing at Mr. McClure?
No, I was not pointing at him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a woman in the audience with a piece of paper that she keeps handing, and I want to know what it is.
It's just about the raises that other...
It's one of the employees.
Can you just make a copy of that and give it to me, so I can have it? Because I can't read it from here. And if you're going to make it visible, I at least want to know what I'm seeing. Do you know what I mean? It's more helpful that way. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I wanted.
All right, is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Or anything? Five minutes, okay, thank you, we'll move on. As I said, we are going to have, I would say to the employees that came, thank you for coming. I mean, I did explain how it works with council and administration regarding negotiations, but you're always welcome to come and express to us your concerns. And also with the voting machines, that'll be last on our agenda, we're going to get through some other things first. If you want to stay for that, that's fine, I just say we're going to keep everything in order while we're doing that. All right, now... Now, county executive report. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
Just very quickly, you know, Capital Blue snuck that you had to get an exam and do an assessment by me the first time, so we're talking to them about that again. But with that being said, I am waiving for the employees, the 1% assessment, for not getting your physical examination or your, you're doing the online assessment tool. So they're not gonna lose that 1%.
No, so you're gonna be sending that memo?
Yeah, that's correct. They should be getting that letter from Mrs. Wedge very soon. That's right, Liz?
Yes.
I suggest, I suggest, based on personnel matters raised here tonight, we need an executive session now.
Very well. We will call an executive session. It is 20 after 5:00, and it's regarding personnel. No notes, no pens, you're not allowed.
No coffee?
Bring your coffee. Stand by a can.
Five. Go ahead. Can you... She put it on the desk. She'll get that paper. I know. I know. It's very good. It's very cool. Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just thought, I didn't know when you sent that. I just was giving... And I have like 16 things. That's fine, that's fine. Just in the future, we do do this, um, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, so, 'cause the agenda goes out on Monday, so...
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I got, I got this time. Well, I had...
Yeah, no, you got it to it. Yeah, it was just... I didn't answer. I did the answer. I was confused. And I did the resolution. And I did the... So, the whole thing's... Well, it's fine. It's fine. I understand.
Yeah. Hopefully, we... Well, I won't, you know, this, once this is over, I'll be good.
Yeah. And it said, you can hire anybody to be a law, and you can hold to be, has to be...
And that's, in fact, Liz Kelly's aware of that.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's the policy. Counting for you.
Yeah, I had some... Well, when she called me yesterday, she started to say, "I'm supposed to be the first to meet." I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on...
I know.
But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I got something right now. I mean, I did... I'm actually... I'm in the casting meeting right now, waiting. I didn't get it. I'm getting one by. I mean, I know it was...
You know what? I'm... We got it about two...
I know. It's so...
I get it. Yeah, and you took them out of that. He's... I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on...
I know.
But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I got something right now. I mean, I did... I mean, I did... I'm actually... I'm in the casting meeting right now, waiting. I didn't get it. I'm getting one by. I mean, I know it was...
You know what? I'm... I'm... I wanted her to say that.
I don't get it. I like... I'm... Whatever happens to that?
Yeah, I, yeah, that was kind of painful. I just thought, I didn't know when you sent that. I just was giving... Had I...
And I have like 16 things. That's fine, that's fine. Just in the future, if we do do this, um, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, so, 'cause the agenda goes out on Monday, so...
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I got, I got this time. Well, I had...
Yeah, no, you got it to it. Yeah, it was just... I didn't answer. I did the answer. I was explaining, so I was confused. And I didn't know what I was doing. And I did the resolution. And I did the... So, the whole thing's... Well, it's fine. It's fine. I understand.
Yeah. Hopefully, we... Well, I won't, you know, this, once this is over, I'll be good.
Yeah. And it said, you can hire anybody to be a law, and you can hold to be, has to be...
And that's, in fact, Liz Kelly's aware of that.
Yes.
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 Yeah. I, I had some... Well, when she called me yesterday, she started to say, "I'm supposed to be the first to meet." I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on... But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I got something right now. I mean, I did... 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 I mean, I did...
Well, I won't, you know, this, once this is over, I'll be good.
Yeah. And it said, you can hire anybody to be a law, and you can hold to be, has to be...
And that's, in fact, Liz Kelly's aware of that.
Yes.
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 Yeah. I, I had some... Well, when she called me yesterday, she started to say, "I'm supposed to be the first to meet." I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on... But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I got something right now. I mean, I did... I mean, I did... I mean, I did... I mean, I did... I mean, I did...
I mean, I had some... Well, when she called me yesterday, she started to say, "I'm supposed to be the first to meet." I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on... But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I mean, I did... 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 I mean, I did...
A little. Well, when she called me yesterday, she started to say, "I'm supposed to be the first to meet." I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on... But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I mean, I did... 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 I mean, I did...
I mean, you know, and that's right now, this one I predict will be later, but right now, as I'm trying to line up, too, you know, I have to rely a little bit on... But I'll, you know, I think I'm going forward.
I mean, I did... 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 I mean, I did...
I talked about it here. Yeah. Hello, you still here? Um, all right. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We were, it's 5:30 and the, an executive session over a personnel issue. All right. Mr. Executive, did you have more that you, I'm sure you had?
Oh, no, with the, with your agenda and the issues that you have before you, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any, I don't have any old business to discuss. Is there any old business council wants to discuss? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to new business. First order on the agenda under new business is consideration of a personnel request resolution, Department of Human Resources Recruitment Specialist. Now, um, this would normally be Mr. McGee, but he's on the phone, so I think we'll have somebody else on the committee read this. Ms. Hefner will take the honors.
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of recruitment specialist, pay grade CS-19-1A, salary $40,818, shall be created in the Department of Human Resources effective January 1, 2020.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this? Most of this was done during committees and budgets.
This just slipped last week, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we had already talked about it. All right, seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
And Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next we have consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number 144-2019. The pay grade on the, that she provided to us was incorrect, so the resolution had to be amended. Ms. Hefner, would you please?
Where do I have to start? Resolved by the Northampton County Council that resolution number 144-2019 shall be amended as indicated thereafter. Sections marked with strikeout have been deleted and sections marked with bold underline have been added. It is hereby resolved that one full-time position of clerical technician, three, pay grade CR-151A, salary $29,240, shall be created in the District Attorney's Office effective January 1, 2020. It is further resolved that two part-time positions of Assistant District Attorney, pay grade RS-7-1A, combined salary of $103,098, shall be eliminated, and two full-time positions of Assistant District Attorney, pay grade CE-3-1A, combined salary of $123,546, shall be created in the District Attorney's Office effective January 1, 2020.
Thank you. And I know the District Attorney-elect, Mr. Houck, is here. I, I think he'd like to address counsel.
Good evening, no, I'm just here to answer any questions.
Oh, all right, very well, okay. Are there any questions for the District Attorney-elect on this?
Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Hefner, go ahead.
So what would the breakdown between the two new positions be? Because it says a combination, so...
Breakdown?
One's getting 60?
They're both getting the exact same entry level.
Equals split down the middle?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, any further discuss, Mr. Kuzic?
Just a quick point. First of all, congratulations. I remember when we approved your position as our first deputy. So, um, I, I look forward to working with, with you and your staff, and I look forward to meeting the new first deputy. If you could introduce him at some point, we'd appreciate that.
I'll, I'll introduce him tonight, as soon as we get to the next resolution. Thank you, sir, and I look forward to working with you as well. Nice meeting you all, by the way.
Thanks. Any further questions for Mr. Houck? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Houck. All right, any discussion amongst counsel? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, another personnel request for DA, Ms. Hefner?
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County, does hereby approve the filling of full-time position of First Deputy District Attorney at pay grade CEVI-7G, salary $127,437, effective January 1, 2020.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, um, Mr. Houck? I see he has Attorney Pepper with him.
Is this a newly created position?
It is not. It is the vacancy that, it was created from me moving to District Attorney.
Are there any other questions? And, I mean, just, I know we were going back and forth with our office, but it was just paperwork. I mean, you know, we live on paperwork, and we had to figure out, uh, but, uh, yes...
But there's a net change in the pay grade.
Well, he, he's, he, Mr. Houck was, was in the position that he is now going to put Ms. Pepper in, into. And he's put, put him, he eliminated the two positions because there was a retirement, and then Mr. Pepper will take on his position. He wants to bring him in, I assume, at the pay where you're at now.
Absolutely. That's exactly what we're...
That's bottom line.
Oh, okay.
So, that's the discussion. If counsel lets to have the discussion.
I was just asking...
No, 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 and I'm just explaining that that's where we're at.
The change of $25,000, I thought maybe he was, he was, you were upgrading the position, but you're just having him come in at that...
What I was making, correct.
Got it. No problem.
Go ahead.
If you could introduce your...
To my right is my, my next First Deputy District Attorney, Mr. Richard Huntington Pepper. He's been in, uh, he's been in the office longer than I've been alive, actually, I think, over six years.
Nice.
Now, he's been here 36 years. He, he actually preceded John by 12 years.
Wow.
And, uh, he's been a very, very valuable part of this office, and I was able to talk him, uh, out of his five-minute retirement and to come in and be the first assistant. So, uh, it's very, he's a very important part of this transition, and, and as you know, it's kind of a, um, an epic transition in that you have a 28-year district attorney exiting as a full-time, and then a full-time first deputy entering as a full-time district attorney. So this is all kind of first impression stuff, and, uh, the fact that Rich is joining me here is a, is a real important part necessary to our office. Mr. Pepper?
Thank you very much for your confidence, and again...
We didn't vote yet.
...the attorney-elect and his confidence, and thank you for your support.
Anticipated support.
Yeah, anticipated support.
Anticipate, hey, don't count your chickens.
Terry, tell them. Tell them we didn't vote yet.
That's correct.
All right, so I, I think everybody understands what, what's at play here. Is there any discussion amongst counsel on anything regarding this? This is the, what the pay, the person, he's, he has every right to appoint this as the pay, he wants to pay him, and we, uh, vote yes or vote no. No other discussion? Call for the roll.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman? Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're very welcome.
Congratulations.
Good luck. Lot of, lot of old comments tonight, too many age comments. All right, next on the agenda is consideration of the 2020 County Council Meeting Schedule Resolution. Does someone want to introduce this? Ms. Rinsky, why don't you introduce it?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that, one, in accordance with Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 2206A, the Northampton County Council Organizational Meeting will be held on Monday, January 6, 2020, and will begin at 4:30 PM prevailing time in the third-floor meeting room, room number 3116, Northampton County Courthouse, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania. And two, the regular schedule of meetings for the year 2020 shall be conducted on the first and third Thursday of each respective month, beginning at 6:30 PM prevailing time in the third-floor meeting room, room number 3116, Northampton County Courthouse, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania, with the following exceptions. A, for the month of January, the meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 2, 2020, is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, January 9, 2020, and the meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 16, 2020, is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, January 23, 2020. B, the meeting scheduled for Thursday, December 17, 2020, is canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, December 10, 2020, and will begin at 4:30 PM prevailing time, and will be held in the third-floor meeting room, room number 3116, Northampton County, 669 Washington Street, Easton, Pennsylvania. So moved.
Thank you. Discussion?
Nope.
Warner finds it humorous.
I do. No, it won't.
He'll be out at the podium, probably. Uh, any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGee? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Sure.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, next on the agenda is consideration of a County Council Contingency Resolution, Center for Animal Health and Welfare. This is mine, so I'll read it. Therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that the sum of $1,500 shall be transferred from the 2019 contingency account to the Center for Animal Health and Welfare. This is a no-kill sanctuary for, for dogs and cats, and frankly, I'm appalled by how people treat dogs and cats in this country, considering that we created the whole breed of dogs. And I'm just making my pitch, Mrs. Ferraro.
I know, but I amend it.
And, uh, and, uh, I, I just think that, I believe the employees did a fundraiser, and they came up with this, and I think it's, if, if we can build bug domes, we can build, we can give some money to help out these creatures. So, Mrs. Ferraro?
I would like to amend this amount. Instead of the 1,500, I would like to make an, uh, an amendment that it be $5,000.
I have no problem with your amendment. I mean, if counsel is amenable for that...
I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, well, uh, I guess we have to, what's the resolution? We have to vote on the amendment?
Yep.
All right, well, let's have a vote. Is there a discussion on her amendment? Seeing none, let's vote on Mrs. Ferraro's amendment.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, so, Dad, we have to vote on the full amendment, since you amended it. All right, well, it sounds like there's no reason for a discussion at this point, so let's call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Sure.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Mr. Warner, is that gonna be your, your last meeting sign-off? That, that your, your, your way of voting? Sure, okay. All right, now, we, we wanted to roll along because this is, uh, people are here for, and we have a report, the executive had told us at the last meeting that the ESNS would be here, uh, and Mr. McClure, if you would introduce us to who's here, and I guess we'll get started and go from there.
Vice President Adam Garbalito's here, um, and he'll introduce the folks that he's brought with him to make his presentation.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Thank you, council members, for giving me time. Brought with me today Toby Dingbaum. He is a product engineer for ESNS, formerly our Director of Technical Support and Technical Services as well.
Sorry, could you spell your last, the last name?
It's C-A-R-B as in boy, U-L-L-I-D as in dog, O. Toby is T-O-B-E-Y. Dingbaum is D-I-N-G-B-A-U-M.
Uh, I'd like to ask you a question. I know you're gonna make a presentation, and I'm sure there's gonna be questions. Would you like to be able to make a presentation and then have questions, or would it be easier for you, rather than interrupt you? I, I wanna be sure we get the best flow of information possible. So, I mean, I just wanna know what, how that'll work best from your perspective.
Uh, I've got a, a brief statement I'd like to make, and then we'd like to do a demonstration for you, uh, and then we're open to taking questions.
That sounds what is, I think that's probably the best way to go. Go ahead.
Okay, and we're happy to take questions after, but if you have questions as we're demonstrating, you know...
No, I, I understand.
I don't wanna get too far along.
If you get into three sentences and somebody has a question, I think it'd be better for you to make your statement, because we haven't really heard it yet, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Uh, so I said, as I've said first and foremost, thank you guys for giving me the time to come back here today and, and address the council. On behalf of ESNS, I, again, I want to apologize to the administration, county officials, election staff, election administrators, and most importantly, voters. The delay in results reporting and the challenges voters had interacting with the touchscreen are absolutely unacceptable to ESNS, and I believe unacceptable to the council as well. Throughout the night of November 5th and into the morning of November 6th, votes had to be tabulated from the paper ballots. After Election Day, all the voting machines were impounded by a court order. While we knew there were issues with the voting machines, we could not make a final determination until we had access to those machines themselves. While we awaited for that access, we activated an all-hands-on-deck team at our headquarters in Omaha to run several tests on the exact same machines with the exact same configuration as the ones here in Northampton County. We also examined internal processes as part of that effort. This allowed us to start developing hypotheses for the cause and solution for both issues. On December 5th, that's last week, the day the court order was lifted, we immediately had a team of ESNS, ESNS experts onsite here in Northampton County. I was part of that team. We worked alongside county staff, examined the machines, applied some of the same tests that we ran at our headquarters in Omaha, Nebraska, and we were, and we were able to confirm the cause. First, I'll address the issue related to the incomplete results that were reported on Election Night. Our analysis and testing determined that the ballot layout technique used to place instructional text on the touchscreen caused a problem. Specifically, this placement on the ballot caused the system to not properly attribute votes to the correct candidates on the USB sticks. This was a unique ballot that we created for Northampton County, and this was special instructional test, text that we placed on the ballot that had not been tested or proven. The ballot showed correctly on the screen, it also printed accurately on the paper, but the votes were not correctly attributed to the proper candidates on the USBs. Rather, the votes were actually attributed to the special instructional text that was on the screen, which is obviously a non-candidate, but database field nonetheless. So with that, I'd like to do a quick demonstration to show you guys how that all works. So, what, what we have on the right here is an ExpressVote Excel machine that is in the exact configuration that it was on Election Day, uh, and with the exact same ballot layout that was, that was used on Election Day.
I think we, we'll, we'll, we'll move around. I think you're good enough that if one of us has a problem, Ms. Rinsky is free to wheel her chair over, we'll all, we can all...
No, I'm fine.
I don't know, is the, uh, after the meeting, I don't know if the camera that's on that will show when I re, have the video of the meeting, the machines, 'cause I know we have the public here, but, um... Well, why don't you do your thing with us and then turn it around? It's on camera.
So, this is the ballot that was on, that was presented to voters on Election Day.
Yeah.
As you can see, there is instructional text here in the straight party column. Instructional text says, "Straight party vote will light up to the left for this candidate." So it's just some instructional text to help advise the voter to make sure that they know that if you select straight party, that candidate will be selected from those cross-filed candidates, so helpful information for the vote. So we're gonna vote straight party. I'm gonna print that ballot out. This is the point where the voter would be able to review their ballot on the paper. That deposit, that deposit's in the back of the ballot bin here. And now what I'm gonna demonstrate to you, I'm gonna take that ballot out of the bin. So this machine has the ability to take this card back in and present the selections on the screen to the voter, uh, in case of a recount or something like that. So if I place this ballot back in, it's gonna scan it, and it's gonna present a summary of my selections. And if you look closely, in the Judge of the Court of Common Pleas case, the candidate that got, they got the vote is the instructional text.
Okay.
So what we've done over here was, I took this exact single letter, removed that candidate level text and presented it.
Can I ask him one more question?
Absolutely.
But if you look on the paper that you just put in there, is the person's name on the paper? So it just doesn't resonate on the screen?
It just, the database on this machine has it misaligned.
Okay.
And what that text was, was just letting them know that when you select straight party, that that candidate's gonna light up for cross-filing.
I have a, and I, I want you guys to flow, but I have to ask a follow-up question before you go. I hear what you're saying, but my, but my, my question is, the, the one judge got zero. Okay. So it, it, if somebody wanted to vote straight party, I know you're saying, okay, people were hitting this, and it was, it was registering for that, but would have that happened on every instance of trying to vote for him?
Yeah, whether straight party or not. Correct.
So that was just automatically kicking?
Every time that...
'Cause I could see if it was like bot next there, and you think, well, okay, I can see why it's happening, but it was happening regardless?
Any candidate that followed that text would have gotten no votes.
Okay, go ahead. Hold, 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 Mr. Lot?
Well, then, how did he get some votes? He had 160 some votes. Absentees, okay. So he got zero votes off these machines, got it.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Ferraro?
I wanna go back to a statement that you made. I'm not sure if I heard correctly or understood. You said something that this was unique to Northampton County, and it was not tested.
Yeah, this, this was a ballot layout technique that we had not tested, unfortunately.
Why did you not test it ahead of time? What, what kind of, I mean...
But no other county had third party?
Uh, other counties had third parties and cross-filed candidates, but they did not request to have that instructional text on the screen.
Tara, hold on, are you, Ms. Ferraro, are you still?
I'm, I'm, okay.
She has the floor right now.
I'm just appalled at that.
Okay. Did you want...
No, I just wanna know, so, Northampton County specifically requested to have that field.
Yes.
And no, no other, no other county had that field, and that's why that happened? And did it happen in every instance where we used that?
Yes.
So it was consistently messed up? So basically, all the votes that should have been for the one judge, right, just went into a bucket of, a non-voter bucket, and just sat there and weren't attributed to him? So it's just an attribution problem?
Correct, correct. But because it was printed correctly on the ballot, and barcode showed that, that's why we were able to tabulate that on the screen.
So, why was it able to be printed on the ballot if what they selected wasn't properly attributed in the field? Like, why didn't the field align to what the ballot printed?
It's a, it's a misalignment specifically in the tabulation logic, but not in the printing logic. So it did identify the correct barcode and then the correct...
So there's two strains of logic that are used. There's the printing logic, and you said in the screen logic?
It prints correctly, and then as it, when it scans, it scanned it and attributed that to the wrong, to the, to the wrong database field.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I understand.
I get it.
Okay. Mr. Ba, are you, you're a tech, you're a technical?
Yeah, tech, I used to run the technical stuff.
Okay, great, good, 'cause I remember when you were here last time, we had mentioned that, thank you. So, uh, what Ms. Rinsky's saying, so even though the screen was set up, the, the machine was, was programmed in the sense that, that that spot is, regardless of what it said, you had, it was set to vote for the judge in question. So even though somebody, it was hitting that, and, and the software was recording that, in that sense, it was printing the right vote on the paper?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna pretend I'm a very techie person. I, I was at one time, but I'm old, as they say. Uh, I'm gonna, Mr. Warner's gonna go next, and then...
Uh, you said this was unique to Northampton County. Had ESS ever done a, uh, instructional text on a screen before?
We gotta put instructional text on the screen, but it's a particular technique that we have, and not been...
But you had put them on the screens before, but in this case, there was a mistake done by ESS, or was it something that happened in the software?
It was the way that we placed the instructional text on the screen.
Just unplug it, it worked.
Now, he's our techie, by the way, just unplug it.
The particular technique that we use to place the instructional text on the field had not been tested. There's, there's other ways to get instructional text on the field, but the way that we advise the county to do it, not, not been tested, unfortunately.
May I follow up on what Mr. Chairman over here, I am, yo, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the, uh, the logic and test, the auto-test that's in the system, tested, did it test the scanners, and did it test the screen itself, or did it not?
Uh, the pre-election testing, we did, did test the scanners as well as the screen.
Would it have shown a problem with that text?
Yeah, so, uh, we, we, it did show a problem with that. However, unfortunately, our staff did not advise the county properly on how to scrutinize those tapes. So we used a combination of two logical accuracy testing methods, and one of those methods actually did get votes to those candidates, an automatic LNA portion. So at a first glance, you would see votes for those candidates, but if you scrutinized and determined what your expected results were from those logical accuracy tests, and then scrutinized the results you got out of the machine, closely, we would have been able to identify that there was something wrong, and that votes weren't getting...
Can you confirm that all 320 machines that are in the county, that this identical problem took place, and that you can, you confirm that?
We haven't looked at all 320 machines to confirm that, but we have tested this logic on a number of machines at our facilities.
In Omaha, Nebraska, you tested?
No matter what you do, if you use that same technique, it causes this problem.
Because you, you've been here since December 5th. I'm assuming you work through the weekends and you've spent the 10 days looking at a lot of machines. I guess the question I'm asking is there's 320 machines?
Yeah.
And, and how do you anticipate to go through the 320 machines and make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Well, the way we avoid this happening again is we don't use that layout technique. And fortunately, depending on how you look at it, we don't have straight party anymore. So that, the need for that instructional text will be longer.
So you're going to remove that from the systems, all of them?
I can demonstrate that right now.
Before you start, to, to this point, are, are you before the primary? Are you going to, you're not going to do all the machines, but will you, will you take a random number of machines and sort of do an election on them to see if anything like this pops up? I don't know, you take 20 machines, 15 machines randomly and, and see if any problem like that happens?
We will actually touch all 320 machines probably the next election and we're going to bring a team of experts on site to make sure that that is conducted, conducted with the highest level of scrutiny, thorough as possible to make sure that we are checking expected results against the results we got.
Okay, before, and before you start, because I want you to have the chance to talk a little bit before we, we have a couple of questions. Ms. Vargo Hefner first.
So going pre-set up, you know, you said you didn't get a chance to test this, but how soon before the election do you input the names? Do you line up the ballots? Like, give me the timeline before Election Day that you follow to set this system up.
I'm not sure about particular dates.
Well.
But roughly about two months before the election, you start the process of laying out the ballot. Forty-five days before the election, you need to have overseas ballots ready to be shipped out to military.
Excuse me, I think, what is it? At least 45 days when the ballot, we know it's on the ballot. Isn't that how it works?
I guess what I'm asking more specifically is, like, where could that testing occur? Pre-primary?
I'm sorry, he's getting in here, because I just, I, I goes to your question.
Yes.
Like, what's, I know there's a timeframe when we know the ballot is the ballot. And he's double-checking with Charles.
It doesn't start to activate until after the withdrawal period's over and then, then the period starts.
So what, what kind of period usually, usually, I mean, are we talking a month out?
No, no, yeah, month and a half.
Month and a half, thank you. That was it. I'm sorry, go ahead. So a month and a half out, you'll know what our ballot is going to be?
We'll know what the ballot, what it looks like, what it's laid out and we'll be able to do our whole reelection testing.
I'm sorry, Hefner.
Well, no, I guess because it speaks again to voter confidence, like, how do we know that you're going to be able to test it and make sure it's accurate? And like you said, some of this won't be an issue, but how do you know there's not other issues? So what other measures do you use to test that to make sure that it's accurate and that it's going to run properly?
Yeah, a thorough pre-election test will identify.
And is that just at a screen in Omaha that you play with it? Or is it, you're going to come here and you're actually going to set it up and?
We will, we will touch every machine, we will vote on every machine, we will know where our expected results are, we will print a result state from the machine and we will make sure that that result state matches exactly what we expect.
And they're all here, so then what happens en route? So then do you go to the polls and do you test them once they get there at the polling places as a double check to make sure they all work?
No, we don't. Once the pre-election testing is done, everything is sealed up so it cannot be accessed or tampered with and those seals remain there until polls are open on Election Day.
Mr. Steeves.
So the, the test you do, hopefully within that 45 days to it, are you doing that test with what will actually be on the ballot then? So I, I think that was a fault that we, was not done before. So, so I mean, so we'll have, the ballot that people will see will be the one that's tested on to, so obviously the presidential one, so a third candidate for president, something different than we, we may not be anticipating or, or something up until now or?
Right, we'll be using the exact ballots that we'll be using in the election and we're even using the exact USC stacks, cards and all of that.
And then the, the second thing, which is part of, you know, the, satisfying the, the public in, in issues that we had with this and also realizing it's a different system, you know, I worked at a, a smaller poll station there all day, lower turnout, but we still had people leave because of how long it was taking. So, and, and some of it was the screen sensitivity, some of it is, it's a new machine and we have an older population. So I, I think, again, both from the county and I would hope that you guys, in, in part of repairing the confidence from the voter, that we could organize something that, get these out between, before May for people to get, touch on so that they can move quicker through on Election Day when it's going to be a higher turnout of, of next year.
Yeah, we've had discussions with the county about doing some outreach programs, getting out to the public and getting people's hands on it and getting more familiar with it, hopefully gaining some, some confidence back.
Before Mr. Dickbunk, because I know, I, Ms. Zarinski then, then Ms. Ferraro, anybody else?
Will that voter outreach be at your expense?
We'll work with the county, but we'll absolutely be ready to, you know, bear the expenses.
You will be, bear those expenses? Just checking. Now, my second question was, a lot of voters had the experience with the touchscreen that was problematic?
Mm-hmm.
And how are you going to remedy that?
We'll be there.
He's going to do that in his presentation.
Okay.
Something you want to say before he presents?
Yeah, this was probably a very odd situation, but I did have one person call me and say, I was talking to this woman and she said, oh, I thought that was my receipt. The thing, paper came back out and she took it home thinking it was her receipt.
Yeah.
I think we're ready to let, go into his presentation.
And that election was lost by seven votes, so she was a little upset.
Well, there, there, we need to do a little bit of voter education on that. There are instances where if the scanner cannot confirm what is on that piece of paper, actually a protection measure, they will kick it back out because it's saying, I'm not going to be able to tabulate through this piece of paper. So you'll be kicked back out. And the alert goes on the screen, it's kind of informational, but unfortunately, the natural instinct of voters pull that thing out.
Pull it and go.
Then they don't see the instructions and, you know, there is a risk that they want to.
All right, so, Mr. Dickbunk, why don't you start your presentation?
It was more than likely what happened in that instance. There was a mark on these barcodes that the scanner couldn't read, whether it be a scratch on the paper or something. And it wasn't going to allow that vote, so it kicked it back out to the voters. She grabbed it and.
And went.
We did better voter outreach and training. So what we did here is we took the same exact election and removed that, that candidate level tags, that instructional text. Okay, so you can see, there's no more of that, that instructional text there. Okay, that's all gone. I also, and we'll talk about this when we get into the screen sensitivity stuff, I moved these questions over, made the boxes a little bit bigger as well. We'll talk about that in a minute. But I'm just going to vote exactly like Adam did, straight party. You can see Abe.
I just want to see.
I'm going to go ahead and print. Okay? Again, verified, just like the voter, Abe has.
Steeves, can you see all that?
I can.
Do you need reading glasses to read that one on the side?
I need glasses.
No, no, no. What I mean, when you, when you go in to vote, when a voter goes in like me, I need reading glasses.
Yeah, you can go ahead and insert this in the cards and look at those parts.
All right, okay.
And just for visual, these are voted exactly the same way. You can see here in the summary, Abe indeed get his vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Here, where Abe should be, this, this will highlight when voted straight party.
Okay, I see, yeah.
So when I go ahead and pass that and I print those tapes out, all of those candidates.
So as a technical person, when you're setting this up and I, I'm just going to, you've talked about how a software issue, it, one thing, but then it was lot, the, one of the logic streams was going this way and the other was going that way. Is that though, that's that. How does that relate though to the touchscreen sensitivity issue? Which, as you know, because you were, I had, and I think a majority of council members taught, it was, it was fairly widespread. I mean, I, I've done my own going around here, there and everywhere in the county. And I, I'm just curious because, as you know, I said, on the left, if you breathed hard, it seemed to light up, but on the right, people were doing this and it wasn't lighting. If, if you could address that.
What we found is we went back and looked at our processes and Admiral Loo to this in his statement about the touchscreen sensitivity, but we went back and we looked at our processes and we found that these were misconfigured coming out of our warehouse. Okay, so we didn't have good training in place for our operators that were going ahead and doing the calibrations on these, the configurations on these coming out of the warehouse. Okay? And.
That is something that's, can, will be resolved?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you understand, we, we not only was there a concern, and I mean, I'm, we're supportive of this, we're going into next year and you're well aware, it's going to be a wild year. We've been sort of kicked around in the national press on down. So, I mean, I, you, you, by all means, demonstrate.
Yeah, we, the sampling of machines that we were able to review here in Northampton County indicated that approximately 30% of machines may have been misconfigured improperly.
So it sounded like there were two issues. It was the logic stream.
Right.
And then we had a second issue, a problem in our machines.
Right.
Wow. Yes, Ms. Zarinski, I'm sorry.
Can you tell me how that was resolved? How was the issue of the configuration resolved?
Yeah, there's a configuration utility that's used in our, in our, in our warehouse. By using that same utility, it's a software application that you load, you can go through the configuration and get it configured properly. And then there's also a utility that you can use to go in and confirm that it was configured correctly.
But this was a human error? Isn't that what that, that statement says?
Yes, it was a human, it was a human that made those mistakes, correct?
Right, so how is that not going to be a human error again? Because you could reconfigure something and you could fix an algorithm or whatever it is. But if the person implementing that is.
Right. Well, you got to have, you have really good training and really good oversight for those humans and then you've got to confirm their work afterwards. We have, we have a utility that we can use to go in after the individual has configured the machine, have a second person come into that same machine and confirm that it was configured the proper way.
So basically what you're telling me is you stepped up your QA?
Correct, absolutely.
And we will come back here, onsite, touch every single one of those machines and do that same process.
Go ahead, Mr. Lot.
Often do the, I, I'm under the impression you do that once and it's done.
Correct.
Unless the machine gets jarred or mishandled, it's once and done.
Once and done unless you do it wrong the first time, which is what we did. Right, right. Correct, correct.
And you were satisfied with the security at our end?
Absolutely, yes.
But I had another question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
If the, all the votes that were attributed to that one statement were attributed from Abe, were those numbers equal in the end? If all the, if all the votes that were supposed to go to Abe instead went to the field where they were attributed to the non-voter, were they equivalent at the end of the day?
It's a database field, but it's not counted, so it, it.
Oh, it didn't.
It goes there and it just, it's like a black hole really, because it's not a candidate field, it doesn't count up, it doesn't aggregate throughout the course of the day, it's not supposed to get votes, but it was.
It seems that as a non-votable field, so it's just.
Oh, so the votes, I, I thought it was more like a field where it was a repository where the code was, vote goes here.
Right.
And it's still tabulated.
Yeah, it should have went here and instead it basically went into an abyss, you know.
Because one of my questions was about the risk limiting audit that was done. Can you define what a risk limiting audit is, again, for us and everybody out there? And also tell me how that was conducted to test these machines?
Yeah, a risk limiting audit is a way to, there's a lot of different flavors and a lot of opinions on risk limiting audits. They haven't been around for that long, so I don't know that the academic community has totally settled on it. But the general concept is that you audit or hand review a certain percentage of ballots, a statistically significant sample of ballots, to the point where it gives you enough confidence that the remaining ballots that you didn't review are accurate.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a mathematical formula to determine exactly what that amount of ballots is, depending on the margin of victories within the, within the contest in that election.
Mm-hmm.
So what we did here is we, we followed the Pennsylvania statute and, and conducted a recount of, I believe, over 1,200, 1,500 ballots. We supplemented that with an additional hand count of a certain amount of ballots.
Twenty-five per district.
Twenty-five ballots per district we did a, a hand count of to make sure that those, those ballots matched exactly what results were tabulated from those ballots.
And the county did one and then did you do one as well?
The county did it. We were here to provide support and assistance, but it was, it was mostly conducted by county staff.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner.
I, I just had a couple of questions for you. First of all, I guess we should thank you for being here under the wrong conditions, but I appreciate you being here to, to hear our concerns. The second thing is, I had brought up with you, sir, the, the idea that we talked about the touchscreens and the sensitivity and you, I mentioned about a stylus.
Mm-hmm.
Do you remember I mentioned that to you?
Yep.
Did you review that?
I did. Our engineers are discussing that right now. The original equipment manufacturer that produces this touchscreen does not recommend that we use a stylus, but we're testing ourselves because we're not taking their word for it. We want to know if there's performance improvement in using a stylus or not. So far though, results of that testing aren't conclusive yet, they're still working on that, but I personally prefer using a stylus. I don't know if, you know, I think we need to put it through some volume and, and get some different uses.
I was concerned about the size of the, the hands of everybody in the county and being Italian, I have pudgy sausages, so it does bother me. But here's the thing, okay? There are 320 machines. That's, that's what we're, that's what we paid for, that's what we're, we're stuck with, so to speak, okay? What scares me the most is that, that you have enough team members, because I don't think two or three people can do it all themselves.
Right.
Am I, am I correct? It would take more than two or three people to, to check the machines, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
By my count, if you did this in five days, 320 machines, you'd have to do somewhere between 53 and 106 per day. I don't think you can do that on a 24-hour service.
We could do it, but I don't think we'd do it as thoroughly as we'd like and we want to be very thorough, yeah, and very deliberate.
Quality control.
Right.
I don't, what I'm not hearing, and, and this has been my concern all along, is that there were a number of multitude of concerns and problems that voters talked about. Hypersensitivity was one of them. The, the idea of the printout being hard to see with the lighting, okay? I don't know if that was brought up at all.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious how you got the data to go back to Omaha, Nebraska to, to run tests when we had no written documentation on anything that happened here?
We did have logs of the activity that went on here, portions of the logs that, that tracked some of the activity, but, but really we were just, we didn't need, ultimately, we, we needed access to the equipment to confirm our, our hypothesis. But we were able to pull machines from our fleet, configure them improperly on, intentionally, and, and they would then exhibit the exact same behavior from reports we heard from Northampton County on Election Day. So that was our hypothesis. And when we came on site last week, we were able to pull up that utility that we would confirm whether it got configured correctly or not, and we could see it was clearly not configured the correct way.
Okay, my, again, and, and I was, I'm, so you guys know, I'm the one that voted against the machine. These guys are all, okay, I'm the one that caused problems probably. But the fact is that our duty to ensure public confidence is utmost importance to this, to everyone sitting here. And with the 320 machines, I think you have a big job ahead of you somehow to prove, and I don't know how you're going to prove it, I, you, that's up to you, it's on you, how you're going to prove the, the confidence and trust levels in the machines by saying, well, we just have to change one thing in the computer. I, there were a number of issues, I believe. So can you address those? Are you going to be able to address those this evening? Okay?
Yeah. Do you want to demonstrate the touchscreen? That'd be great.
Before you just start, do you want to let him do that or you want?
I'm going to let him go because my question is about the screen sensitivity.
Go ahead, Ms. Zarinski.
So you'll notice in, this is what was presented, this is what you saw.
Yes.
You notice the questions are right up against that.
Yeah.
Okay, right up against the screen, but over here, there's a little bit of a gutter.
Yes.
And we recommend a little bit of a gutter there. That's part one of this. You'll also notice these weren't configured correctly, so if I try to touch now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I see.
No, you're right, that's.
You can eventually get it, but.
Yeah, no, but I mean, you're doing exactly what a lot of the concerns were.
So what we did is this machine.
And if I'm not mistaken, if you hit it real fast and it comes on and you happen to hit it again, you can turn it off. So you sort of frustrate yourself.
So this machine was A, we configured it with that utility, so they went through and they did the reconfigurations. I also, I got a little excessive with the space. It doesn't need to be that big, it can be smaller, but it shouldn't be right up on the end.
But it gave us room for larger sized finger people.
Right, and I bumped up the question, the yes and no boxes, I made them bigger, okay? So they're bigger as well, but you'll see, I can go ahead.
Yeah.[1689.13]
And no matter what I do...
It's reacting.
So anywhere in the box, it's coming on.
That's another key thing.
And I think in the law, and if I'm not mistaken, maybe even the voter, our voter people tell us, by law, the ballot, let's say the name, John Doe, there has to be a little box, like the old checkmark box, in the corner, but if I were to touch it right in the middle on his name, it's going to go on. And I think a lot of people thought, I have to touch that upper corner.
Right, that's part of that voter outreach.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
The gentleman said that was here, that he had a harder time hitting the little box.
Yes.
That's exactly right.
Okay, yeah.
It's hard to hit, but I can touch right there.
That's...
But if you did it on that side, what would happen?
Same thing.
But if you touched the little box, what would happen?
Yeah, that's where it might, that's where you might get yourself in trouble. Right, because you're right on...
Well, sure.
Because that's the, that's exactly what happened to me, what you're doing right now.
Properly.
That was my question. And if you tested the yes and no.
All right, all right, hey, he's going to explain that.
So there's, there's a law that we have to show on a, on a touchscreen ballot, that we have to show a little checkmark, to show the voter that they selected that candidate.
Oh.
I didn't realize that, but I was told that myself, the law.
That's kind of interesting. Now, obviously, next year, the ballot won't be as loaded with people and data, because there'll be fewer offices, there probably won't be retentions, but for a year that's like this, is there any way to expand the writing, or is there a way to, to blow up the screen, if you will, or move it through different pages? Because it is difficult.
Absolutely, we can go to multiple...
You don't want to make it to a second page.
Take all these offices, or all these questions, and put them on page two?
No.
And make this all the way across, and all the way down. So there's multiple different ways that we can lay this.
Well, when you, when we went and saw the registrations, and a few of us both in our, our conferences and, and went over, I believe that showed one of the advantages was for people with vision impaired, you could increase or enhance, but I'm sure most of the voters come in, didn't realize that, I don't think.
So I can go here to a large text?
Yeah.
And now it is just contest by contest.
Hmm.
But we're going to have to have people who really understand that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, that's another issue with training, because... Then are people going to know intuitively to keep turning the pages? So unless there's specific...
Yeah, our first objective would be to try to get it on a single page, with as much as boxes as possible. We'd only go to a second page if we didn't feel the user experience was going to be good.
All right, go ahead. Wait, hold it, you, is there anyone else who has a question?
I still have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hefner still has...
So, right, there I see you have voting instructions, which were not present when I voted, at the top. Like, are there going to be things, are there things that we could add somewhere when I'm in the box alone, that if I get stuck, I don't have to call somebody in? Because people had questions about privacy, and I had to have somebody come in and see how I was voting to be able to correct it. So what kind of things can you add, without having it be a content box that confuses somebody if I got stuck, would help me while I was in the process?
No, you're right, I'm just, I don't travel stock.
They did have foresight on that, selecting the name, and did put this, they did try to put this on as many machines as possible, I don't know if it was on all of them. What we've talked about is making that, that, that specific instruction, that you can just push the name, much more prominent, even potentially including a picture of it, and like, maybe a little finger touching the, you know, the candidate's name instead of the box. The other thing I'll mention is, I don't know if we'll get it in time, but we have an EBS 6100 that's been certified by the EAC, was currently being reviewed by the Pennsylvania Department of State. It gets rid of that box right there. If you turn this, turn these screens off, and you look, no matter what instructions, people are just, are trying to hit that little box.
Sure.
Want that box.
I think that's what a lot of people are used to.
Uh, we can hold.
It will eliminate that box, and so you make your...
It's the days of scam.
Well, I mean, hold it, the new version, I thought it was a law that we have to, you're saying that...
The box won't show up until you select.
Oh, oh, so we have that option, well, well, that's, we should be doing that. Go ahead, Mr. Lot, I'm...
And that can be adapted to this machine?
Yes, so the next, in, in state certification right now, is what we call EBS 6100, that, that version of this has that option. So as soon as that's certified, you can upgrade it, and you'll have that option.
And Ms. Hefner told me she still had the floor.
Well, no, but I wanted to let him...
All right.
What about the light on the text?
Yeah, we've got a couple of prototypes, we, we got that report elsewhere about difficulty viewing, and if you're not in a really...
Well, I was going to say, this is well-lit, when you go in that booth and close it, I couldn't read it, I'm in class.
But I don't know that I, like, does that light up?
No, it doesn't.
No.
So we've, we've got a couple prototypes, fortunately, there's a power outlet right down here on the side.
Oh.
So we should be able to come up with a pretty easy solution.
Well, what's that?
That'll work.
So this alerts, this is what alerts voters or poll workers, right?
Yes.
If there's issues of somebody in there, we're also looking at adapting something like this to do that. For an LED strip, we haven't covered the final solution, but we are working on it right now, but we've got some options, and we're aware that's an issue.
Yes, uh, Ms. Hefner?
I'll defer to my comments, thank you.
Mr. Warner.
Referring, I mean, thank you. We've talked about all the, the other small things, now, there was a concern with undercounting and no voting, how have you addressed the undercounting or the no voting itself in the, in the software?
I'm not sure I understand that, what's the issue?
There were, there were votes that were not taken at all, okay?
Blank ballots.
Blank ballots, okay. How did you address that?
We warn a voter, so if I want to vote a blank ballot, and this happens because some people want to show, I don't know about Pennsylvania, but this happens in Alabama, people come in and vote blank ballots all the time in a primary, because they just want to keep their voting record. So that can end up in a blank ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So no selection, and I can get passed, and you can actually set up a thing that says, hey, you're an alert, that says you're voting a blank ballot, are you sure? We can have that configured here, because they get a view of their selection and see that they have no selection.
They don't like anybody on the ballot.
Yeah, they just want to, they don't want to vote, they just want to...
It's actually, it's actually a term, it's called abstention voting.
Okay.
Or a protest vote, sometimes.
Protest vote. Okay. So we're, we're going into 2020, and we're, we're going to, hopefully beforehand, not be running a test with a fixed grouping of machines during a presidential election, is that what we're hoping for?
I wouldn't use the word fixed, but repaired would be the word I'd use.
Fixed would be the wrong word, I agree with you. Correct, adjust it, whatever you want to use.
Correct it, yes. Absolutely.
There's a sound button.
I, I, I wish you well on this, all right, because I, I believe it's a big undertaking, and I, I hope you've covered all the bases of all those things that were, that were mentioned, because there were, there were issues, okay?
Yeah, I appreciate your well wishes, and I can tell you, we are 110% committed, we will bring every resource to bear to make sure we have a great election here in 2020.
I don't think you have a choice, I think you're, I think you're indebted to do that to this kind of point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Cusick, I believe you had...
Yeah, just a quick comment, first of all, to me, this, this exercise, it, it just feels like we bought new uniforms, we bought shiny new helmets, and we put our team on the field without the benefit of a preseason game or a scrimmage, and the result was a disaster. But I would echo some of the comments that we've heard earlier, the key is, what do we do going into next year? And one of the first questions I had is, are you going to be able to have, in the primary ballot, will you be able to get people on the right screens if you're Republican, Democrat, or independent? And, and will that work?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. The other one is, in the general election, there will be certainly more than two parties involved. Do you see that as a challenge? And how, does your software work for four or five different parties and independent candidates?
Yeah, I think we, I think we can handle up to 20 parties or something to that, but yeah, we absolutely will handle that, but I don't expect anybody to take my word for it, we're going to prove it through testing and voter outreach.
Okay, and when we have 20 parties, I'll, I'll really be worried. Yeah, thank you very much, and I just, I hope that this is resolved, this better be resolved by next year, thanks.
It will be, it will be.
Yeah, and I mentioned, I mentioned that the, the press, and, you know, we took a beating, and really, for me personally, I, I've been around a while doing this, I've gotten beaten up, and sometimes they did a decent job, usually beaten up. So that's not really as big a concern for me, I mean, I think it's a concern for the county. My main concern, though, is voter, voter confidence, I mean, that is the fundamental one thing that we, we have, and without that, it's, it's under attack by so many people. If people don't trust their vote, meaning, then, then the rest of us, we're just fluff. So I mean, that's why I think we're all, I'm hoping by the primary, we, we've gone through everything, and, you know, we, we have it all. Now with the machines you're going to bring, I wanted to ask you a question, are these new machines, or have these machines been around a while?
These are new machines.
Brand-new machines, so we're, we're using brand-new machines?
Correct.
And what about, and I, I'm sure you answered this before, but write-ins, going forward, I don't, that was never mentioned as an issue, because I don't know if there were many write-ins or not, but did you test that as a, as a test of your total product? And, and was the, were the write-ins working okay?
Yes, they were.
Because I didn't, I didn't really get in, that didn't seem to come up in our conversations.
We had no issues with the write-ins.
Oh, okay, all right, well, I mean, fair enough, thank you, you answered my question.
So, Mr. Cusick asked, he alluded to the next election, the primary. What happens if these machines don't perform correctly in the primary? Now we have two cycles, what is your commitment to the county, and what is, what are the repercussions that you're willing to take?
Well, we're committed to having a successful election, obviously. If for some reason we do have issues, obviously, we'll be committed to resolving those issues and working with the county to, to, to get to the county's satisfaction.
Right, because there's some people calling to have these, to just have us get our money back.
Right.
You know, so how, how many chances do you get? That's what I'm asking.
I think that's up to you guys, right.
Really? It is up to us? Because, you know, I, I think it's not just our vote, it's the commission's.
I think if there is a problem in the primary of 2020, we'll be having a whole new discussion, and the things you're talking about will probably be, yes, Mr. Warner will not be here discussing.
Yeah, Mr. Warner will not be here, yes.
He keeps reminding, he'll take his fingers and be somewhere else. But the thing is, I, I don't think, as I say, what they're, what they'll do or definitely do, I think, yes, it will be what we're definitely going to do or not do, if, if, God forbid, if there's a problem again.
Yeah, because I want to know what's the realm of possibility? Because people ask me, can you get your money back? I want to know, can we? If these election machines do not work next time, through the next primary.
I'm not intimately familiar with how the contract works, but I, I'm sure we'd work through that with you guys, if that situation occurred.
Right, okay, and are you going to be at the December 19 meeting?
Yes, Toby and I will both be there.
Okay, just asking.
And like, the only thing we could say...
Soon as you get up, try and just go ahead.
Stand behind me, and you will be here fully committed.
I don't know.
Right, so, but the point is, is that the, with each election, the voter confidence is eroded, so there's only so much that the voters are going to take in allowing themselves to be guinea pigs for a new machine, you know? And there's a lot of people who said that these were fantastic, they loved them, they were so happy we came into the 21st century, and there were, there were a lot of people who had very good things to say, and I was at two different polling places. The one polling place in Hanover had every imaginable problem. The second polling place in Wing Gap had none, everybody loved them. So it's like the, the individual polling places had different experiences of these machines because of the lack of consistency, but overall, because all these stories keep coming out, and because this is getting national press now, our voter base is, the confidence in the election process has been eroded, and so we cannot have a second election where things go awry. So that's a lot of pressure, not, not to, you know?
No, we, we agree.
Yeah, that's a lot of pressure on you, it's a lot of pressure on us.
You have to...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, go ahead.
Just to kind of sum it up for myself, last time you guys were here, it was a couple of days after the election, we weren't even sure if these machines worked right, we weren't sure if the counts were corrected. Now, you know, in retrospect, the machines did what they were supposed to do, the paper backup worked, just the reason they wanted a paper, paper backup was just for this reason, if the technology fails, we have a paper backup. So that worked, so I'm happy about that, because it would be a whole different conversation if we were rerunning an election with you folks. So your machines did work, like Ms. Zirinsky said, there was many people that liked these machines. I'm, part of the reason I voted for it was, I thought you guys did a good job making these things more accessible to disability, people with disabilities and, and other issues in the voting machine. All that being said, I still think they're good machines. A third of these things weren't correctly programmed, or however you want to, you know, refer to it, I think that created a heck, that created why we're here today. I, I'm not too concerned about the crossover votes that weren't tabulated, I think you guys explained that, it makes sense to me, anyway, why that happened. All that being said, I think really what we have to do is really educate our voters, this is a new machine, and we have to get our people comfortable with it. One thing I think, and I talked to administration about this, and hopefully it'll get back to the election committee, I think something that's really needs to be stressed to the voting public is that paper is everything. That pa, you need to check your vote on that paper, the paper is your ballot, and that has to be put forward, and, and with that being said, I also had some problems with, you know, there's churches with lighting from 1970, there's also brand-new gyms that you could, you know, see anything at. So I, I'm glad you guys are already addressing the lights, I found that to be a real issue. But moving forward, people in this county using these machines have to understand, we are using a paper ballot, check the paper ballot, please, make sure that is stressed, I think that would, you know, if everybody checks their paper ballot, I have all the confidence in the world that that's not, that paper ballot is not going to be changed. So if they check the paper ballot, and the paper ballot says what they voted, we have a good, confident vote. So that's my two cents, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Bargel, have...
So you're saying that there were only two things wrong, total, with this whole process, as far as the machine was concerned, correct?
There are two primary issues, out of every election, there's lessons learned, and we'll be working with the county to make sure we address all those, there's little logistical things that we need to address, but these were, these were the two main issues that...
My concern is, like, I think this is a good start in answering some of the questions, and I'm definitely motivated to be solution-oriented, and not problem, 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 but I guess, for my own comfort, like, I'd like to know what else we can do, not just test the machines before and then oops on the day, is there going to be a way to maybe spot-check during the day, are there going to be people around in the county to be able to assist if there are problems? I think I'd like to hear more safeguards that we would do, and, and again, that's up to you, the election commission and the administration, to work out the specifics, but I think I would feel more comfortable hearing some extra steps, if possible.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
As well as some of the training that we need to do, because clearly, this woman that headed off the evening said, things went well there, and it sounded like they did a really good job of helping their voters and educating, we'd like to get more people like her up to that level, but I'd like to see this work, just because I'm a voter, and I want my vote to count. I, I really am glad that there's a paper backup, but we just need to do better, so...
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a great suggestion, we'll, we'll work with the county on, on developing a plan to, to go above and beyond what we've described today, there's things we can do, like putting rovers and technicians in the field, you know, quick responders who can jump on the scene and address things with tools and things like that, there's a lot of things we can do with training, and different forms of training, and more hands-on training, so I think there is some things we can do to, to address exactly that.
I'd like to hear, I guess, back in February, like, before the primary in April, like, where we're at with that?
Sure.
Like, take a few months and hear the plan then, if that's possible?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, no problem, let's go around, and we'll get a final round in here, Mr. Warner.
Just a final comment, and I want to talk what Mr. Lot said, the reason we're here is because the largest manufacturer of, of the voting machines in the country had engineers and people in their plant that made human errors, and I believe they said that, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and we, we as a, as a council, especially our election commission, took a lot of time, and were, our, these programs were marketed to us that they were almost infallible, and that they wouldn't cause problems, okay? And now, I know the votes were counted, I'm not disputing that, I've, I've been consistent with that all along. I don't want us to anesthetize the fact that we had touchscreen problems, we had lines, I don't want us to anesthetize the fact that we had touchscreen problems, we had lines, we had long lines because of the confusion and maybe some voter intimidation on the way they were handled. All those things come into play. So whatever this council chooses to do from here on in, do not forget where we're at. These guys are, have a lot to do right now, and they have a lot to prove. And I did mean it when I said I wished them well. I wouldn't wish anyone a bad bit of business over the years, but the fact is that I'm still, I mean, we're all still waiting. We're actually putting our faith in your hands for the 2020 election. We don't have any hard, solid proof right now that these are going to work. And that's, I'm just being honest with you right now. I'm still waiting. There's no magic bullet here that you can fix, okay? And unless I hear a team of 50 people unload it off a plane to show up at a warehouse with 320 machines, and they take them all out, and they, they just scrub them down and they change everything, that would make me feel good. But having all those machines still here, they didn't leave. And, and do we manufacture these in Nebraska, Ohio?
Yeah, they're Omaha, Nebraska. That's where final manufacturing is done.
Do we manufacture them here?
Yeah, final assembly and manufacture is done in Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, so they come in in pieces and you guys put them together.
Correct.
That's where this, that's where all this started, okay?
Right.
I just want to end by, and I'm, I'm not going to take up any more time. I, I wish you well, I really do, and I wish this council well with these decisions. I'm still not convinced, I'm sorry. The proof is in the pudding. We gave it the shot the first time. We were guaranteed a lot of things, and it didn't come through. And yes, the votes were counted, and we paid $2.8 million or $2.9 million for a paper ballot backup. That's what I'm looking at, not the technology. Thank you.
Understood. Are there any other questions or comments on this side of this? Because I'm going to turn, because I'm going to miss people. Anybody over here?
Yeah, I just...
Mr. Lot.
I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate everything Ms. Hefner just stated, but please don't be out here on election day fixing stuff. You need to have these things ready for the primary. Put your people, get these things done, check them all ahead of time before that day. I appreciate what you're saying, but I thought to myself, God, if they're out there on election day, we have a problem.
Absolutely. Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Available.
Absolutely.
Fix it ahead of time so we can have a good, competent election.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be, if there's a couple texts available, having a cup of coffee. Yeah, we don't want you, he doesn't want you walking in with your jackets on with your logo. All right, well, if there's no other, thank you for coming in.
Mr. Hackman.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We have Mr. McGee, and Mr. McGee, go right ahead.
Real quick, I've been listening attentively, and I think I might have missed something here, but it'd be nice if ESS writes a procedure that the Election Commission and the director needs to follow, and it needs to be signed off on every machine that all these tasks were performed.
Did you...
I think that would help assure the voters as well. I don't know if there's already one in place, if that's part of the program with these brand-new machines, but I think moving forward, it's a sign-off, it's verified that the tasks were performed, the stuff was done as scheduled, and I think proactive measures like that are important. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.